This is the duly advertised meeting of the Joliet Zoning Board of Appeals. In our capacity, we hear petitions for relief from the strict provisions of our city ordinance. Matters of this type, the decision of this board is final in respect that it does not go to the mayor or city council for any further action. If you disagree with our decision, you do have recourse in a court of record. We also hear petitions for variations of land use. In matters of this type, we act as an advisory committee to the mayor and city council, making a recommendation either for or against it. Final decision on land use is made by the mayor and the city council. With the chairman or the secretary, please, just call the roll.
Ms. Safford?
Present.
Mr. Alessio?
Here.
Mr. McCauley?
Here.
Mr. Doctrye?
I'm here.
Mr. Riggs?
Here.
Mr. Hennessy?
Present.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from May 21st, 2020 zoning board of appeals meeting. Motion would be in order.
May I make a comment here on the item about the Essington Street used car dealer? It seems to me the report in the minutes of that meeting are confusing if not wrong. They state that the vote, the recommendation was approved. It was approved with the two members voting for it and three against. That seems to me is not applicable. It seems to me that it should be amended to state correctly what happened.
Okay, we will review that and we'll bring these minutes back to the next meeting for review.
I assume that was you. Do you want to make a motion to approve the minutes except for that one item to be reviewed later? Well, we could do that. I would so move that we approve the minutes with the exception of that particular item. I don't have it in front of me, so I can't specify what it is, but it was the used car dealer on North Essington. Yeah, just make a motion unto that effect. I just did. I hereby move that we approve the minutes with the exception of that one item. Do we have a second?
Second.
Close the roll, please.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Doctrye?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, just for the record, that item was petition 2020-20.
For the record, thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, oh, Mr. Chairman, we do have two cases that have been withdrawn. Petition 2020-23, and that is 1101 North Broadway Street, and also 2020-24. And that was also for 1101 North Broadway Street. Both of those petitions have been withdrawn.
Thank you.
We will go a little out of order here. The next item will be 2020-26, and that is a variation to allow a tractor-trailer parking and storage area located at 3350 Shenahan Road. Their request is for a variation. The petitioner is requesting a variation to allow additional truck and trailer parking that exceeds the allowed accessory parking spaces along and adjacent to the two longest sides of the structure. The zoning board of appeals will make the final decision on this particular request. Under site-specific information, the 72-acre subject site comprises one lot, and that is Lot 5, in the Keaton Home Business Center subdivision. The existing zoning is I-2, that's General Industrial Joliet. In addition to permanent uses allowed in the I-2 district, Lot 5 is also allowed barging and transloading from the Displanes River, as was allowed within the approved development agreement in 2016. Surrounding zoning, land use, and character to the north is industrial I-2. To the south is the Displanes River, also with I-2 zoning. To the east is industrial I-2, as is to the west. Under applicable regulations, Section 47-17.17, Paragraph 29, off-street parking regulations, general discussion. The approval of the requested variation on truck and trailer parking will allow the Keaton Industrial Center to be competitive in attracting and retaining industrial users within the park that need additional truck and trailer parking spaces. The additional truck and trailer parking area will allow the site to add 774 additional spaces. Its proposed location is at the south portion of the subdivision, which is undeveloped at this time. The barging and transloading operation that was allowed on this site will be continued to be permitted. Paving and landscaping will be required as per the city subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance. A payment in lieu of taxes will be required as per the terms of a future ordinance. The funds collected from the pilot will be utilized for adjacent city of Joliet street maintenance. If approved, the additional parking area will only be allowed for overflow parking within the industrial park. The variation to allow the additional truck and trailer parking area will not cause any negative impacts to the surrounding area. If the zoning board desires to approve the variation, the following conditions would be included. Number one, that the additional truck and trailer parking area will only be allowed for overflow parking within the industrial park. Number two, the additional truck and trailer parking area shall be required to make a payment in lieu of taxes as per the terms of a future agreement. And we would also add to that that the payment, the payment in lieu of taxes will, should be earmarked for city roadway maintenance improvements. Number three, that a landscape plan be submitted as part of the building permit that meets city ordinances. And finally, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and possible revocation of the special use permit. And that concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Petitioner present.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, the members of the commission present here. First, telephone mic and answer, I got the gap. If I could just mention one other thing that Mr. Jackson may be wishing. We wanted to add the fact that pilot payment, it would be a half a pilot payment for any truck and trailer parking, truck and trailer parking for tenants inside the park currently and a full pilot payment for any new tenants outside. Is that correct?
Want to speak into another mic? Uh, Mike, we're having trouble hearing you. Having trouble, oh, here, okay. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, let me, let me, can I just start with that? Okay, Mr. Torrey's saying something. I don't know if Mr. Jackson is hearing me or what.
Yeah, I, yeah.
We had discussed, I guess I'll dress this to Jim. We had discussed in the meeting that we had with you that the pilot payment for people inside the park, we know there's one tenant right now, would be a half a pilot payment for those currently inside the park. And anybody who'd use the additional parking from outside the park would be a full pilot payment.
Yes, yes.
So I talked with Kyle, your, you know, who you're representing for Keaton subdivision, and he understands that what you applied for was just this expanded accessory parking for people within the park. If you want to allow for parking outside of the park for truckers that don't, you know, have a warehousing or distribution used there in the park, then you need to apply for a special use permit. That is not what you applied for. You applied for the variance. A special use permit would not only go to the zoning board of appeals, but also to the city council. So I had a discussion and traded emails with Kyle on that, and he understood that and was fine with that at this time.
I think we'll have to ask for a continuance because we'll have to get this, Mr. Schumacher's not available. I, I don't, I'm not saying Mr. Torrey's incorrect, but that's not my understanding, so. You want to take? I think we'll have to table it because there's no reason to take this to the commission unless there's an agreement with, with the, you know, an understanding with the client and the city. I thought we had one, but apparently we don't, so we better check that out, so. Request has the petitioner table a motion.
Wait, you want?
One month tabling?
Yeah, one month. Till the next meeting? Yeah, till the next ZBA meeting. Motion would be in order.
Motion to table agenda item 2020-26 to the June, or to the July zoning board meeting?
Do we have a second? I can try and get him on the phone right now and see if he would, all right. Why don't we skip this right now and let me see if I can get him on the phone and see if I can clarify this, okay? Why don't you go ahead to the next item, if that's all right?
I think.
Want to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, we've got to withdraw the motion.
Okay, I'd like to withdraw the motion to table agenda item 2020-26. Yeah, pending, pending of contact.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me get him on the phone, I'll be right back. I know that I'll get him. We only have one other item on the agenda. Yeah, I'll be right, I'll, I'll get him, he's, he's available by phone, so, okay, thank you. Want to proceed, Mr. Secretary?
Yes. Our next item would be 2020 dash?
There's your old business, Kendall?
Oh, I'm sorry.
2019-18?
2019-18. That is, the applicant is Chris Enright of Christopher Enright Architects, owner is Menards Properties Division. Location 2526 West Jefferson Street. Their request is for an extension of a special use permit. A special use permit to allow the construction of a tire repair facility on one of the vacant Menards Walmart shopping centers outlets. As a condition of approval, construction was to have begun within 180 days. A letter is attached by the petitioner explaining that due to unforeseen delays in market conditions and the COVID-19 virus, work on the site had to be slightly delayed. Expectations by the petitioner indicate that the work should start by fall 2020. If approved, the extension would allow a new construction start date by December 15th of 2020. Planning staff is in favor of this request. The zoning board of appeals makes the final decision on the extension request. The original staff report is attached, and if the proposed special use extension is approved by the zoning board of appeals, the following conditions would still be included. Number one, that a landscape plan be submitted and approved that meets the requirements of the city's landscape ordinance. Number two, the special use granted shall terminate and lapse unless a building permit or certificate of occupancy is obtained not later than 180 days of the effective date of an approved ordinance. And number three, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and possible revocation of the special use. And that completes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Petitioner online?
Yes, he is.
If I am, I'm present.
I must swear you in. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Name and address.
My name is Christopher Enright, in 628 East Perrin Street, Royal Mission, 48061.
Okay, do you have any comments, sir?
The only comment that I'd like to make is that we intend to obtain a building permit, five late this summer, early fall 2020. But construction on the side will likely not start until first of spring 2021.
Okay, if there are any comments or questions by the board? If there are no comments by the board, do we have anyone online that we should speak in favor or in opposition? Does anyone know?
There are no callers on this petition, Mr. Chairman.
As there are none, chair will close the petition to the floor and ask the board for discussion and a motion. Motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Would you name it, who was that, please?
It sounded like it was Bob and Chuck both second at the same time.
So who was the first?
Okay. Secretary, pull the board, please.
He said Chuck.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Doctrye?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is petition number 2020-21. Applicant in this matter is Jeffrey Gove, who is the managing partner. Location 1590 North Larkin Avenue, and their request is a variation. The petitioner is requesting a variation to allow two main buildings on one lot and on, and on required off-street parking from 1,624 spaces to 1,221 spaces in order to construct a 4,600 square foot retail building at the existing Commercial Plaza site. The zoning board of appeals will make the final decision on this case. Under site-specific information, the 10.3 acre site is Zone B3, that's General Business Joliet, and currently contains the vacant Ultra Food Building. A Vasa Fitness Facility in Plasma Center are proposed for the vacant grocery store space. The subject site is contained within lots two and four in St. Francis subdivision, which was recorded in 1955. A variation of required parking for the shopping plaza was approved in 1985 that allowed overall parking at one space for every 200 square feet of building area. Surrounding zoning, land use, and character to the north and south is commercial with B3 General Business Joliet zoning. To the east is institutional with R2 single-family Joliet zoning, and to the west is commercial B3 General Business Joliet. Applicable regulations, Section 47-17.1, Paragraph 5, general regulations. Under general discussion, the approval of the requested variation would allow the future construction of a three-unit commercial building within the North Ridge Plaza Commercial Shopping Center. One of the tenant spaces is earmarked for a Starbucks coffee with a drive-thru. The other tenant spaces are not known at this time. The proposed building will be constructed with brick as the primary exterior material and wood siding as a secondary material, which meets the requirements of the city's non-residential design standards. The drive-thru has been reviewed by the Joliet Traffic Engineer, and it meets the requirements for approval. The reduction of parking to 1,221 spaces for a total shopping center building area of 324,804 square feet, including the new building, should not create a parking issue at the site since Vasa Fitness and the Plaza Center are not high-volume traffic generators. And that concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Additional online?
Yes, this is John Ratchon. Can you guys be okay?
I must swear you in, sir. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
And your name and address again.
My name is John Ratchon, I'm a licensed architect with Cambridge and Theodore, in 2454 East Dempster Street in Plains, Illinois.
Thank you. Any comments you'd like to make, sir?
No, I would be glad to answer any questions if anybody asked.
What is it exactly that you guys do there? Is that similar to that Plasma operation on Jefferson Street here in town?
Is your question specifically for the proposed use other than the Vasa on that existing building?
Well, I'm wondering what exactly the Vasa operation is and if the other two aren't known yet. That would be subject to zoning whenever they were occupied, so let's just stick with the main operation.
Yeah, there's two separate issues, I guess. One, the large existing building on site will be occupied by a lot of Vasa fitness centers. They're effectively like lifetime fitness, so they have workout equipment, locker rooms, things like that. And the other tenants in that large space, they file like Plasma services. So there are people that would come in and donate their blood to get the Plasma. Few days is urgent, not that it is noise. And that's separate from the proposed building, which is about 7,800 square feet, which will now serve up to future.
Good, thank you. Any comments by the board? No questions or comments? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor or opposition? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion. I would move that we approve this petition.
Second.
We have a motion and then a second to approve the petition. Pull the board, please.
Mr. Doctrye?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Just for clarification, was that Mr. Doctrye that made the motion? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, our next petition is 2020-22. The applicant and owner is Ryan Tagg, location 3207 Tina Circle. And his request is a variation. The petitioner is requesting a variation of a required rear yard setback from 25 feet to 21 feet and 11 inches in order to construct a covered rear yard deck. The zoning board of appeals makes the final decision on this request. Under site-specific information, the irregular-shaped 14,777 square foot lot currently contains a single-family house with a concrete driveway. The house recently had a wood deck that the homeowners wished to replace. The property is zoned R1, single-family residential. Surrounding zoning, land use, and character, the property in question is surrounded by other single-family properties that all have R1 zoning. Applicable regulations, 47-5.4, yard and lot requirements in an R1 zoning district. General discussion, the requested rear yard variation will allow the owner to construct a new covered deck off the back of the home. The irregular shape of the lot and the angled nature of the property line creates the hardship to meet the 25-foot setback at one corner of the newly proposed deck. Most of the deck will meet the required setback. An uncovered paver patio is also part of this proposed project. The patio would have no setback issue, and that concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Petitioner online? Mr. Tagg, are you online?
I am on the phone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I must swear you in. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
And I need your name and address for the record.
It's Ryan Tagg, in 3207 Tina, CINA Circle, Newlinn, Illinois 60451.
Okay, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, I'm sorry, was that for me? Do you have to play add?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, this house is over, well, over 20 years old now, and it's been injected with, somewhat drastically deteriorate away, and it wouldn't be able to be reversed. It's actually, if you look at it, it's a lot of, but if it goes closer to the lot line, then we're both opposed. We're actually feeling the outside corner back fairly significant.
Any other comments, sir?
And like I said, we're trying to make improvements and upgrade the property.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments by the board?
I have one. This is Bob. Sir, I assume that what you propose is not objected to by your immediate neighbor?
Yeah, the immediate neighbor that it affects, their names are Del and Vicki, and we've talked to them extensively about this, and we didn't really have time to prepare a letter or anything like that. They're capable more than willing to come to our behalf or whatever needed. They have no objection to it whatsoever, and if you would like some type of a letter, I'd be more than happy to ask them to do that on our behalf, so.
I doubt that's necessary. If they objected, they probably would have let us know by now.
Yeah, since they're up there so long, so.
Any other questions or comments by the board? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor or in opposition?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
All right, no comments. The motion would be in order. The chair closes table to the floor and asks for a motion.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
I approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition, pull the board, please.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, we're still trying to get the caller online for 2020-25. We are suggesting that we could bring Mr. Hanson back at this point.
Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, yeah, good afternoon again.
Sure, party?
Yeah, I've met with Jim Torrey, and Jim Torrey has spoken with my client, and we've clarified and understand that the necessary spaces here will be at half-pilot rate, so the matter is fine, and if we're okay with the changed conditions as Mr. Jackson outlined tonight, I'd ask you to proceed with a vote today.
Everything's all cleared up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we've had the discussion, is there anyone online wishing to speak in favor or opposition? Are there any further questions by the board? If not, chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Allison, I can do it, this is Bob.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the petition, pull the board, please.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that it on the petitions?
Okay, so we can't raise the petitioner for 2025 on the phone.
Want to table that, or?
Was there, was there a timing issue with these folks, do we know?
I don't know, they just, they would pull it online for how long, but I don't know.
And we didn't, we didn't have any callers in on this, did we?
No, but I'm sure there is.
Everybody hold on, we're just having a discussion here. Can we proceed with that petition?
It's at the pleasure of the board, we can proceed with this petition, of course.
Proceed with it?
Yeah.
Okay, read the petition.
Okay, 2020-25, the applicant in this matter is Valentine Anore, who is also the owner. Location, 1113 and 1115 Cutter Avenue. The request is for a series of variations to allow construction of two single-family houses on two undersized lots that are in common ownership. The applicant is requesting a series of variations to allow construction of two single-family houses on two undersized lots that are in common ownership. Located at 1113 through 1115 Cutter Avenue, the zoning board of appeals makes the final decision for this request. Requested variations from the zoning board of appeals includes a variation to reduce the minimum lot size from 7,500 square feet to 4,800 square feet, a variation to reduce the minimum lot width from 60 feet to 50 feet, a variation to reduce the front yard setback from 30 feet to 25 feet, a variation to reduce one of the side yard setbacks from 8 feet to 6 feet, a variation to reduce the sum of side yard setbacks from 20 feet to 19 feet. Under site-specific information, the two lots are Zoned R2 Single Family Residential Joliet. Each lot is 4,802.5 square feet in size with 50 feet of frontage. The lot, like most lots in the neighborhood, is non-conforming to the yard and lot requirements for the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. The zoning board of appeals reviewed and approved a similar petition for these lots in November of 2007. The petition did not include a variation to reduce the sum of side yard setbacks, and the site plan varied in that the plans included detached garages. The two houses that were proposed at that time were never constructed. Under surrounding zoning land use in character, the surrounding parcels and majority of the neighborhood are Zoned R2 Single Family Residential. The neighborhood consists of one to two, one to two-story, single-family homes. Most of the houses in this neighborhood are on non-conforming parcels. Applicable regulations, section 47-6.2, permitted principal uses, section 47-6.4, yard and lot requirements, section 47-17.1, paragraph five, general regulations, section 47-19.8, finding a fact supporting a variation referred to the attachment. Under general discussion, the subject properties have been vacant for several years. Both lots are held in common ownership. The property owner seeks these variances in order to build a two-story, single-family home on each lot, which are non-conforming lots of record in the R2 Single Family Zoning District. Conceptual site plan, elevations, and floor plans can be found as an attachment to the staff report. Each house will have three bedrooms and two and a half baths, as well as covered front porch and an attached garage. The overall house plan will be the same for both homes, but reversed in layout. In addition, the front elevations will vary in detail in order to comply with the city's anti-monotony standards. The size of the proposed homes and lot coverage are similar to those, to other houses in lot coverage in this area. The property will be subject to the city's landscaping requirements for single-family homes, as well as the anti-monotony standards for new single-family home construction and subdivision regulations, including the provision of sidewalks. If the zoning board desires to approve these variances, the following conditions shall be included. Number one, that the final site plans, elevations, and floor plans of these two houses shall be substantially similar to the conceptual site plans. Elevations and floor plans that were submitted with this petition. Number two, that a paved driveway shall be installed and maintained. Number three, the property shall comply with the city's landscape requirements for a single-family house, which can be found in section 47-15E, paragraph three of the zoning ordinance. Number four, that the two single-family houses shall not have substantially similar front elevations or facades as outlined in section 47-17.30, residential construction anti-monotony of the zoning ordinance, and that concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Under the anti-monotony standards, are these houses going to be identical, or just how broad is that?
So, with the anti-monotony standards, there is an allowance for reverse elevations, so you can have two houses that are similar in design, but the reverse elevation would be the garages on different sides of the, of the house.
Okay, now, that's all I want to know, thank you.
Yeah.
Is the petitioner online here?
Valentine.
This petitioner's here, Valentine Anore?
Mr. Chairman, this is the one, we do not have the.
Oh, we don't have online, okay, I might have. Is there any questions by the staff, by the board?
Yeah, I have a question for the staff, this is Bob. Kendall, would it be possible at all for anything to be built on this, on these two lots that would not require a variation? It seems to me that's just impossible.
Correct, yes. Yes, because they are non-conforming, and new construction is required to adhere to the current regulations, so anything that would be constructed would require a variance.
Well, if I can make comment, that's, that's very true, but the one word that's left out of here is the word legal. There are legal non-conforming uses because of the zoning.
Correct, yeah, legal, legal.
Keep that in mind when you're making your decision. Any other questions? Do we have anyone online in favor? There's no one online? Chair then closes petition and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
This is Bob, I move that we approve the petition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition, pull the board, please.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Thank you. Next section, new business, no public hearing, we have no items.
Our next section is for public comments. This section is for anyone wanting to speak regarding a non-agenda item. Our four-minute rule is in effect, and I do believe that we don't have any callers for public comments.
Okay, so a motion to adjourn would be in order?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, I did it, I tried to, this is Bob.
Oh, okay, fine, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, pull the board.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Yes, indeed, aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye, and I would like to inform the board that Mr. Riggs was in the hospital recently recovering from pneumonia, under fear that he might have had the COVID-19, but apparently he didn't. But I'll keep my six feet away from my man anyway.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Karen, are we clear?